So now that we have quorum, I'm going to just tell the attendees that we just arrived from executive session, which was held to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And that was in reference to the Medfield Teachers' Unit or Teachers' Association Units A and B. The AFL-CIO, school secretaries, custodians, cafeteria workers. All right. So for this regular session, I will now call to order this January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two regular session of the Medfield School Committee. As we are on Zoom, I will begin with an official roll call. So start with Megan Glenn.
Here.
Okay, and Leo Brem?
Here.
And Tim Knight?
Here.
And Jessica Riley here. Okay, this is, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Medfield TV YouTube channel. Okay, now I'm going to call for a public input. And citizens at this time may address the Committee on Items of School Business, not on this evening's agenda. The Committee will take such items under advisement without action or discussion at this time at the meeting in which the item is presented. And since it's been a while, all comments will be limited to no more than three minutes. Please raise your hand on Zoom. I see you Lauren. And we will bring you over on video. Please state your name and address for the record. We will not consider comments made through the Q and A feature. And written comments are always more than welcome through our email address at S C C H A I R at email dot medfield dot net. Okay, so Lauren, would you like to come over and please turn on your camera? Lauren, could you please turn on your camera? Thank you. There you go.
Lauren Lilligrin, eighty-three South Street.
Eighty-three South Street. We are having a little bit of a hard time hearing you, but please proceed.
Alrighty, is this okay? Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's better. It's there's a little lag, but it's cool.
In April of twenty twenty-one, Dr. Power delivered an analysis on the assessment practices at Blake Middle School to the school committee. This report concluded with several recommendations, among them that the assessment at Blake should move from pure standards-based reporting to a quote "middle way," incorporating a traditional grading methodology. This shift was primarily due to parent and student dissatisfaction with standards-based reporting. The tremendous hardship that students would face as they transitioned from Blake to the middle school. Last month, Principal Vaughn presented the middle way to the school committee. However, the assessment methodology is simply standard-based reporting using A, B, and C and play a four key to end report card. Medfield parents and students have spoken and requested a shift to traditional grading. We were promised that this shift would take place early in the twenty twenty-two school year. Instead, standard-based reporting will remain. I would respectfully request members of the school committee and Dr. Marsden listen to the fleet feedback from Blake alumni and parents and the recommendation of Dr. Powers and incorporate true traditional grading practices into the Blake Middle School assessment practices, beginning with term three. Thanks very much.
Hey, thank you, Lauren. Do I have any other comments? Okay, so Kris Pecu-Potts, if you would like to bring her over, Owen, that would be great.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Chris. How are you?
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up in addition to the December meeting as well with regard to the Dale Street project. It was stated as part of the discussion on the maintenance, the deferred maintenance and what would be projected, that it would be something that we would need to do for three to five years until we could go down another path with another school. I would like to caution the school committee that when you're looking at the actual dates of what's involved with pursuing MSBA, once again, we're not looking at three to five years. We're looking at more like five or six years. The SOI submission period closes on April twenty-ninth. By the time they vote, it would be December. By the time we vote on a feasibility study, it would be May twenty twenty-three. And by the time we get to the point of construction, it would be likely twenty twenty-seven. I'm sorry, a school opening would be twenty twenty-seven. So we're looking at conservatively five to six years. And I think it's really important to state that anyone who was involved with advocating against the the vote as it was put forward, really wants to see a school built. And the MSBA process is not just a matter of two signatures on a form. Those signatures have to be duly authorized by the entire school committee, which is five members, and by the entire Board of Selectmen, which is three members. And this is not a decision that should be made unilaterally by any one person. This needs community input. We need to be talking about whether or not it is financially sound to go through the MSBA process again, and whether we actually want to accept the fact that they will tie our hands again and not give us the flexibility that we need to meet the town's requirements and the town's needs. Because we will end up having parking wreck as well, sitting on the sidelines as waiting for this to be coming through. So this is not a unilateral decision. This decision to pursue MSBA needs to be taken up as a community discussion to look at the pros and cons and to look at the financial implications, especially considering the cost of deferred maintenance, which we heard was going to be in the millions. And I just, it's important that the school committee actually realizes its role in this, is that you are the lead of this project and you are the ones who are, or should be spearheading the discussion on this and where we're going forward. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, do I have any other people who would like to make public input comments? Sorry, at this time? Okay. Thank you both, Lauren and Chris. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for both the regular school committee meeting on December ninth, twenty twenty-one, and the policy workshop meeting on December tenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve those two sets of minutes?
So moved, Tim.
Tim, so moved. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Leo Brem, second. And then all in favor, I have to do this by roll call again, so just say your names. Oh, sorry. So if you could just, we'll start with Megan and
Hi, yes.
Megan Glenn. When I, okay. And Leo?
Hi.
Okay, so Leo Brem, I, and Tim?
Yes.
Tim Knight, yes. And Jessica Riley, yes. So the motion passes. Okay. Tonight, under new business, as we move on to new business, we have the Director of Social Emotional Learning in to do an update on where social emotional learning is and that department is right now at this point in the school year. So Owen, if you would like to bring over Dr. Worthy, that'd be great. And Jeff, feel free to introduce Dave any way you like. Hi, Dave. It's nice to see you.
Nice to you, too.
Yeah, I appreciate Dave coming tonight. I know that he's been working really hard with the SCL and working with the district and especially with elementary schools as well this year. So I know that he's eager to give an update and a presentation of what he's been working on.
Okay, thank you. Nice to see you guys. Thanks for having me on. We got some a lot of, a lot of stuff going on, as Jeff said here, so it's nice to be able to chit chat a little bit about it. I figured I would kind of blast through some of the stuff we have going on through each school and then give you kind of a state of the union on how kids are doing and staff and then let you guys fire away. So I do get wordy and this is the stuff I like, so I apologize in advance, but I'll try to get it quick and get you out of here.
Would you like me to time you? I'm working on a new technique tonight.
I can't deal with that kind of pressure, you know.
Very gentle. All right, go ahead, Dave.
All right, sure. So, so one of the things that, that we're always looking to see is, is how to build the skills of our older students through our younger students. And what we're seeing a lot of in our older students, and I'll speak to this in a couple of minutes, is kind of a overall lack of different types of coping skills and self kind of regulation and kind of emotional management. And there's kind of an affect intolerance where kids aren't able to manage the things that are coming at them all the time and they shut down. So we tried to figure out, how can we do that? How can we give kids some skills to be able to combat that stuff and self-soothe and re-center and kind of quiet the brain mechanism as young kids? So one thing we were able to do was incorporate a program called Inner Explorer into our elementary schools. I was able to meet with every elementary school teacher and talk about the program, which is a mindfulness program and that's really, it's been really great. And it's, the feedback has been outstanding so far. For the younger grades down in Memorial, the lessons are about three to five minutes long. For WeLock in Dale Street, they're between five and eight minutes long, and it's really a plug and play. Some teachers are using it right after recess to re-center kids. Some people are using it right in the first.
Do we know what, there's a lot of static. I mean, does anyone else hear it?
I don't think it's actually static. What I think is maybe, is it possible, Dave, that you have a mic on that's rubbing against something?
Hmm. I don't.
Don't? Okay, it's actually quite clear now, so.
Clear now?
Clear now.
I'm sorry about that. I don't know what that was.
No idea.
All right. So anyway, so sorry about, do you need me to repeat anything, Tim?
No, it wasn't that bad. I just, it was, I figured I'd let you know and let's try to clear it up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry about that. Yep. So the Inner Explorer model, basically, it, it is a mindfulness lesson for each kid. So each classroom, it's a daily lesson and the kids sit quietly. They focus on breathing. They have a guided kind of almost meditation that they can go back to. And it really kind of closes down all that overstimulus that kind of gets them all ramped up and allows them to learn how to self-soothe and self-regulate. The teachers have reported feeling really looking forward to it every day as well, because it's, you know, it's eight minutes for them to be able to re-center and take the blood pressure down, take the, and get rid of the kind of the noise and it gives them a peace. We opened it up to, to the families, so a lot of family engagement. I have the dashboard, so I can see who's using it. All the teachers are engaged with it, which is outstanding and fantastic. And the parents are really utilizing as well, which is nice, because that allows them, the kids to be excited about it, learn, go home, have the parents reinforce it. So that's been a really positive piece there.
That across all elementary?
Yep, yeah, all three schools. We were able to get the license for all three schools, which is, which is really great. So, you know, I figured we'll reassess at the end of the year and figure out if that's something we want to keep going with and you know, keep paying for and go for. But so far, like I said, the teachers that we piloted it last year at the end of the year and the teachers loved it, the ones that used it. And so they were really big advocates for it when I was trying to bring it over to the rest of them. And so it's been really great. So like I said, I'll, I'll survey and do a whole kind of feedback analysis at the end of the year, but I'm hopeful that we are getting positive gains out of that and we can kind of continue that. Along the vein of programming and curriculum for our younger grades, Open Circle, which has been like a staple in SCL curriculum for a very long time, is closing their doors this year. So we're looking at different options for WeLock and Memorial. In, I don't know if you remember this, but a couple of years ago, we piloted what was then Sanford Harmony, which is now Harmony S E L, which is a free online curriculum where they came out and trained us. Does this sound familiar? They came out and trained us, trained our teachers. And Lindsay Warner, guidance counselor down there, kind of ran it. And now the teachers run that. And that was really, that's been really good, a lot of good feedback there in at Dale Street. My, we're going to look into, what we're looking into now, I'm in conversations with the principals to try to figure out if that's something we should bring down, that same program. My goal, my kind of ideal goal in the world is to have a common language and common themes and common lessons all the way through. But this would be a really good step. But if it, if it doesn't make sense, then we won't do that. But that's the kind of research we're going in now. We have Open Circle for the rest of the year, but we'll see how Choose to be Nice fits in with that, which is what they run at Memorial. But, you know, I think certainly now, I think almost more than any time in history, we need to have our kids have a good, clear understanding of compassion and empathy and social appropriate decorum. And, you know, we will continue to kind of espouse the, the tenants of castle, which, you know, is the relationship skill building and appropriate decision-making and responsible action, all those things that they work on. But, you know, it's, I've been saddened by adult behavior recently, and I want to make sure that our kids are not kind of absorbing that and they're getting things to combat that, you know. Just as a quick aside, like my mom lives with us and, you know, she'll have the news running twenty-four seven. And sometimes I gotta get my kids out of there, because it's not the content necessarily that's, that's to me so sad and damaging. It's the attacking and the talkovers and the inability to have all the things happen that we're trying to teach our kids like all day, every day. So I'm really kind of hoping that those particular curriculums will be able to align and that we can start to kind of send force one message and that the people in the elementaries are doing a beautiful job incorporating the stuff that we have, but some of that stuff's going away. So we just want to make sure we fill that with the right stuff.
If we probably should have told you this is being recorded and they could go back and watch this. Your mother or whoever.
I'm sure my mother's watching now. She's very. And so, you know, so we're looking at that. Hopefully that'll, that'll come to fruition. At Blake Middle School, we're seeing some student, an increase in student need. You know, we have, you know, it's no secret that the last couple of years have been some of the hardest ever in public education in our, in our modern society, right? I'm not going to lecture on that, but it's we're seeing some of that need bubble up like we thought we might. You know, so kids that have been out for extended times, kids with a lot of school avoidance, kids that are having a hard time with anxiety and depression, suicide alley, all that kind of stuff. At, you know, at the high school, as you know, we have that RISE Transition Program that kind of supports that piece. I have a full-time teacher. We have clinical staff, which is me, and then adjustment, and then all the guidance staff right there. It's a little bit of a different setup at Blake. So I've been talking with Nat and Mary Brule and and Stephanie Worthley and some of the people that are kind of overseeing those departments. And we have some ideas, so I'm just putting it on your radar. So I might be asking for some things in the, in the future to consider. You know, maybe a little bit of changes to some of the space over there to be able to better support kids that are coming back. I know right now we have a bit of a spike in one particular population. And so, you know, I have my, my teacher that from the high school going over to Blake, you know, a couple of times, back and forth, trying to run back and forth and do these things. But we, I think there's a way to, to be able to really support those kids and do it and be fiscally responsible in the, in the meantime. But so just so you know, nothing, nothing specific or concrete yet, but I just figured I'd grease the skids a little bit, so you know that when we ask for it, it's not out of left field or asked to consider different options. So. Oh, let's see. So, oh, I wanted to mention in that is the, the new, the advent of that full-time adjustment counselor position at the middle school has been a huge, huge benefit to all of us clinically and support staff, because that doubled everything, right? That doubled the, the good stuff at the middle school, but it also doubled Russ Becker's ability to manage stuff at the high school level as well. And that, it just exponentially enhances the support services. So that's been really great. Let's see, at the high school, do you remember we used to do the One Love Training where we brought One Love organization to talk about violence and relationship violence and domestic violence? We're going to have them reignite that, work with our seniors, train group facilitators to facilitate groups around what used to be a film called Escalation, which will now, we're going to go to a different film called Amore del Bueno. Same type of thing, but just an ability to have them come out and train our group facilitators. But the neat thing is this year, they're also going to work with our wellness staff to try to bolster their relationship awareness and relationship building curriculum as well within the wellness department. So that's kind of cool. We're actually doing that. Where, where those discussions start with wellness staff and me and One Love next week. So that's a pretty cool thing, too. So we're excited about that. We have Chris Heron come out to do his thing. You know, Chris Heron comes out and talks about drugs and alcohol. He played for the Celtics at a B C. He's a local kid out of New Bedford. We've had him come several times. I've had him at three different school districts that I've been at, and that's always a good.
Hey, Dave, I hope, I hope Chris doesn't hear you say that it's Fall River, not in Bedford. He would, he would not be happy with that.
Yeah, I know. When you get, when you get a little bit north of twenty-four, sometimes you forget to delineate.
I know, I know, yeah.
I know. Sorry about that.
I won't let him know that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah. Again, it's being recorded, right? So, so I messed up. Another thing that's been really, really helpful as I think about it is the flex period and the changes of our schedule in high school. The flex period has allowed the kids, you remember, we used to get on here and we used to talk about kids talking about three hours, four hours a night of homework and tests and an inability to see your guidance counselor and support staff. That is, that conversation is really, really abated, because now we have built-in time to meet with teachers, to meet with support staff, to meet with each other. I know it's another human connection point for kids that are struggling to come down and meet with us. We have every flex period we maxed out and extended passing time is another thing we have as a part of that, that generally leads into that. And that's always maxed out. So the connection points are really, you know, we all know the, 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 the name of the game here to keep people healthy and safe and in the space to learn is human connection, right? And so we've created a lot of connection points, which I think, and I'll go into this in a second, too. It's really, I think, decreased some of our hospitalization numbers, which is outstanding. But there's probably other reasons for that as well, but I think that's where it starts. So, you know, each, each one of those times that we have to be able to talk to kids and be able to sit with kids and be able to kind of relate to them, all those quasi-therapeutic touchpoints, really, they mean a huge amount to the kids, especially when they're in any kind of crisis. So that's been really great. Guidance can do their future planning. Russ can do his therapy. I can do my clinical stuff. And so it's been great. Well, let's see. And like I said, I know I talk fast. I'm trying to get through all this stuff, so please just interrupt me or shove me down or just hit me with that clock, whatever you need to do. But as for psychiatric hospitalizations.
All the time you need tonight.
As for psychiatric hospitalizations at Blake, we've had just two formal ones, a couple on waiting lists that we have currently. We have had five or six evals done as well that didn't get screened in. And at the high school, I think we have, we've had three psychiatric hospitalizations, but these numbers are way down. And I think it's because primarily of these touchpoints and the increased ability to access support staff. However, on the flip coin, the emergency room lines are very long. People are spending three, four, five, six, seven days in the ER waiting for a bed and then just saying enough. So it's, it might, some of those low numbers might be a little misleading.
So I would wonder actually, how much do you find yourself, and I feeling like you are a kind of a, almost like an intermediate hospitalization, you know, kind of partial hospitalization program for kids who simply cannot get in through the queue? Because I, I mean, I've, you know, it is appalling to me that this bed crisis has not gotten any better over twenty-five years, because this has been not a short crisis, but this is even worse now. But do you end up feeling as though you end up running kind of a partial hospitalization program and, or kind of keeping kids stable in a community until such time that they can get a bed? Or, I mean, and also, you may have gone to, may have told me this, but do you feel as though there is a peak that you have, much like we're experiencing a viral epidemic, we're also experiencing an epidemic of, of essentially brain disease and mental, what we call mental health, but it's really just health. And do you feel like the, that we have peaked at this point? I know that at one point, the high school had had so many more referrals and so many more kids on the radar than they had ever had before in their life. Has that leveled or is that going down somewhat?
Well, I think that our, our depression and anxiety levels, numbers are higher. However, I think we're treating them with more success.
Okay.
You know, I think that we're, we're able to identify them more through these touchpoints and through the ability to see them more often and more easily. And that kind of, that coincides with some of our SOS, our Science of Suicide numbers, where it's, it's, those numbers haven't really gone up, which is good. And, but the, the good news there, and I don't know if this speaks to your point quite or not, but it's kind of a roundabout way to, to answer it is the willingness for kids to talk or kids that want to talk is actually going up. So, so that kind of stuff, that's really good. At Blake, unfortunately, it's the other way. So there was a, it's, it's kind of stayed in the, from two thousand seventeen, it's kind of stayed. There's been a little dip, but last year was really a, a high number year, so it's better, but not good. But the willingness to talk is actually gone down at the middle school.
How do you measure that?
Concerns me a little bit, right? So. But, so I don't know if that answers your question or not. Our numbers of anxiety and depression are up. Anecdotally, I mean, this is a hard time right this minute. You know, our juniors and seniors are really feeling the college push. The juniors are all worried about it. They're talking about always being on Naviance, looking to see their, where they are in the scatter plot. And in the college situation and acceptance and admissions process has changed completely as well with a lot of colleges doing away with the, the SAT and the ACT requirements. And so there's a lot of different things. I had a kid was telling me today that their college, they have more early decision colleges, early decision applications this year than they've ever, ever had of regular applications in a year. So everybody's kind of all askew.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
They want to go back to normal so badly.
Yeah. And, you know, so, you know, the seniors are really feeling it. You know, the, they're waiting, they're looking every day. They're getting deferred from, you know, five, six, seven colleges, maybe not getting into any. So they're really in a, and they, they kind of feed off each other in that regard as well. But, so right now is a bit of a, a tenuous time in the high school, and also because second term is about to close, this isn't really a huge school community show, but second term is about to close.
Oh, no, I think we all have high school. Well, no, it's very big for at least two of us.
It's about to close. A lot of college stuff depends on term two. We've had so many absences with COVID numbers being so high that it's, it's a push to get all this stuff done. And how do you get the, the grades are about to close next week, but not really, because you got a little extension and are we going to have four hundred incompletes? Or you know what I mean? So it's, everybody's just kind of in flux and up in the air. So it's a bit of a mess right now. Kids are feeling the heat. And this is a hard time to be a kid. So. Anyway, I think the short answer is we're seeing more anxiety and depression, but I think we're able to get to, we don't have a lot of those oh, no, I, I think we missed this kid moment, because we've been able to touch more kids, you know, so.
And how is the handoff to community providers going? I mean, because you're, you're within a school environment. There's only so much that, that you and Laura and Russ can do. Are you, are you noticing that kids are able to be handed and supported also in tandem by community providers? Has that gotten?
It's a bit of a wait. People are having decent luck with the interface referral system. But, you know, it, there could be a wait, you know, and we see, we're starting to, the, the eating disorder stuff is starting to bubble up a little bit more now when, as it does when the anxiety levels go higher. And eating disorder treatment is a much more specific and specialized skill set. So there's not a ton of eating disorder, eating disorder specializations out there. So the list can be a little long. I have a kid right now that's been, that's been on the standby, ready to go any day now to go to an inpatient hospitalization for an eating disorder. And we're on week four of having the bags packed next to the door. So that's really hard. You know what I mean? That, that just kind of adds many layers onto the, the, the issue at hand. So there, the, the treatment providers out there, they're doing a good job, but, you know, and they're sick too. And virtual teletherapy isn't really, really easy for kids. I think it's easier for adults.
I think adults do better with it and maybe even, but I think that there is a part of, first of all, it's a skill that nobody was taught in school. And second of all, you know, I think kids, a lot of kids were just kind of traumatized by the Zoom experience in general. They, they want to be in school and they need to have that connection. Yeah.
Yeah, it's been hard.
And so they want to be kind of like in that, in that room with people. That's, that's much more authentic to them.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean that it's not something you should do. Say it out there. It doesn't mean that it's not something you should do if you can do it, right?
Absolutely. Something is. Some kids, I've, I've come a lot, a bunch of kids recently that are just like, it just didn't, I just don't connect. And again, comes back to human connection. It's the same thing we always tell the teachers. It's about the connection, not the content, right? So it's, it's, it's hard for them, but certainly if you can do it, do anything, any port in the storm when it's, when it's tough this way.
Yeah.
Let's see. From a kind of a district lens, we have, starting tomorrow, well, I, you might have seen the email I sent out to parents about the Chasing Childhood Documentary, that'll be able to be screened for till the nineteenth, and on the nineteenth, we'll have a Till the nineteenth and on the nineteenth, we'll have a discussion with, uh, Dr. Peter Gray from B C. Which is, we're hoping that is, um, helpful to have parents kind of reflect on their own parenting styles and, and things. I know that. I watched it and it's not with any of these things that I kind of bring, we try to bring, we're actually cost sharing this with Medway, which is good. In my, one of my colleagues. He actually, I could see his house from here too. It's kind of cool, but, um, he, uh. Is, uh, the director wellness at Medway. We have a good, kind of really good working relationship and a similar set of philosophical vision for this kind of thing. And so we're kind of cost share on that. And, um. You know, just allow people to reflect on, on parenting and their own stuff. Um, so like I said, I, I don't. I don't agree with everything that anybody ever says, but what I. What I do think is valuable is, is been able to, uh, get some other. Different perspective when you're trying to raise kids because it's. I don't know if you guys noticed this, it's kind of hard. Yeah. So anyway, yeah. Uh, the S E L Task Force continues to meet, um, to work together. We've changed our. Focus and process a little bit this year. We used to divide into small subcommittees right off the bat and try to tackle, um. Individual problems this year. We're kind of focused more on trying to see. What data we want to gather and where kids are and where adults are and parents and staff and see how we can best support them as a district and how that will lead the strategic plan. You know, so we're kind of going back to that and like, is our, what is our capacity as a public school system to support? Kids, you know, as they fail and as they succeed and what is each school doing in terms of S E L related things? And how can we continue to embed S E L stuff into the curriculum and that kind of thing? So. And I can think it all kind of starts, it's, it's such a big picture. When we look at the big piece of it, it kind of starts to figure out exactly what kind of data we want. And then we'll go on from there. Um, so that we're in the process of doing that, we're starting to read, um, meet about that. And then. Let's see, we, uh, we're seeing some. Um, heightened levels of anxiety and depression in both Blake and, um, high school, like I said. But I want to have a shout out to like all the guidance and nursing and adjustment, like these people have been excellent. They've been working around the clock. And so. They've really been doing a great job and teachers for the most part have been very willing to, to be flexible and understand the student need and, and really that all. Not to be a brown nose, but it all comes from the top down and you guys all support everything that we jump out at you. So. And I can tell you that I have lots of friends and lots, lots of colleagues in these, um, all our schools around the state and it's not always that way. So thank you for helping us. Really help the kids and making it much easier for us. We have our active minds club has put a whole bunch of stuff all over the high school about how to access resources, um, which is kind of a cool thing. We, uh, started to meet as a district, um, as a vertical support team, all the, um. Support staff and the whole district gets together once a month. We had a great meeting today to kind of streamline our processes and, and try to figure out how to best support, share information from. We lock all the way to the high school and kind of streamline that process so that everybody's on the same page, which is great. A lot of, it's a good think tank of really veteran people. And a mix of veteran and new people. And it's been a really good thing to, to do that too. So just a lot of cool stuff around how to support our kids while they're struggling and succeeding and failing and, and all that kind of stuff. So. Happy to take questions.
So do other members of the committee? Megan, would you like to?
Yep. I just start off by saying a huge thank you for. I know you, you just thanked us, but right back at you because, um, you're in there with our kids every single day. And what you're doing is important and we definitely thank you and appreciate you. My question is in regards, you had talked about it, Dale, the teachers themselves, um, were trained. In, I think it was Stanford Harmony or something like that. Yeah. And the very nature of elementary school is that your teacher is, you know, the one person that you're having the most connection with. And it gets a little more tenuous as you're in middle school and then definitely high school, you're seeing a whole bunch of other. Teachers throughout the day. I know that. Blake has advisory, um, and I think we still do that at the high school, although not as much. Um, is it? Now sort of the flex teacher that's meant to kind of be the touchpoint that, and even that's not every single day. I'm just, my, I guess my point is. Is there professional development or, or some faculty meetings where you lead and kind of walk through the one oh one of what a teacher needs to kind of look for or? I'm just like, where are they getting their S E L sort of? Lens from in, in the, in the upper. Schools.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So, uh, just to answer the question about the high school advisory time, yes, the flex teacher is the advisory teacher. And then from time to time, we have specific things that happen that we have every. Teacher kind of hit at the same time as a school, different topics, kind of like an advisory. Um, but yeah, so the. Having the, the flex teacher, the way it works is everybody has a flex, a homeroom flex kind of advisory, advisory flex, they call it. And that's divided into two. So you could either stay with that teacher or go on. I know that, um, even I run one with Leo Rosary, who was a Spanish teacher and, um. Every day one, they're all, they all have to come and be flexed in with you. And we go over the grades, we say, how are you doing? We kind of meet with the kitty individually to try to make that connection. I have freshmen this year, which is cool. Um, so you can get them kind of young, so which is good. But, um, as far as the P D around, around the S E L piece for the staff, I mean, I usually run a D L D piece. We do, you know, we do have different trainings that we do. We don't have a ton of them on the books, but.
Would that be something that especially given now in the state of what, what we're living through? Do you think that would be something worthwhile to kind of have like a? A day of, of that?
Yeah, I mean, it would, I, I always think so, but there's a lot of things that happen in a high school, you know?
Missing in a perfect world, say we have. Money to, it's falling from the sky, you know, and you could ask for something that normally you couldn't ask for. Would this make your list? You know, I'm, I'm just, um. What, what would you want that you don't have?
Yeah, I, I. That's a very loaded question. I appreciate that. Yeah. But, um, but. You know, and I, I think part of it is. I have to admit that now, uh, this is my sixth year unbelievably. Um, and you know, I, I had. Kind of, it took a while to develop the, the kind of things that we were trying to get across. And it took a while to go through the individual battles and the, and the kind of. Getting the philosophical underpinnings of what I was trying to push. And those, those battles are pretty much over, like and not, and not that people don't need the S E L stuff because. Some people are, are really have see things one way and some people see things another way, certainly, right? But. I think that the, the staff in general has done a really good job. Being flexible and supportive and understanding. In a perfect world. Yes, um, I think. I, I would always want more training around this kind of thing, but like I said, I, I'd have to think about a little bit to figure out exactly which, what that would look like.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just, um, I guess. Doesn't exist. It doesn't exist kind of formally yet. Um, but it'd be something that you're interested. I'm certainly interested in, um, but again, yeah. Budget constraints and whatnot, but I, I, I agree with you completely that the culture is such that. It's, everybody's embracing it and, um. And we have to, it's just the. The way of the world right now. So, um, thank you again for everything you're doing.
Oh, sure. Thanks.
Leo, Tim, yeah, go ahead, Tim.
I mean, I reiterate what Megan said on one on a thank you too. I think David, we've seen it, part of what you were saying. Training, it's like, you know, S E L has kind of become part of the fabric across the schools and it's, it's, so you know, it's just a way of life. Um, and there's a huge thank you to you and Jeff and, you know, allowing that to happen. Some of this I've heard a little, but I think it's worth sharing with the broader team. I heard a little through the S E L meeting. But when you say, you know, at the Blake Middle School, there's, there's increase in student need and you're starting to, you discuss a little with Nat Stephanie Mary. And maybe an example or two and, and even. I think it's worthwhile to hear it and like, how might the S C, the school committee or even the community? Help? Because I think one of the things even as we saw with the, the remote learning, it. Really became real clear. It's, it's a team sport here, the parent, the teacher, the student, all kind of collaborating a little more. So I'm always trying to think, hey, how can the community, you know, David, what, what can you be sharing with the community to make, you know? Make your job easier and therefore make. You know, everyone's job and life are easier. So. Long winded way of saying, but you know, give a couple of examples of a like and how, how are you addressing it? How would you like to address it?
Obviously feeling that, uh, being. Beyond abundance of caution that we would not be. Violating anybody's confidence or, or confidentiality. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, well, like. For granted, we have a, a certain grade that has a few kids that are really, um. Struggling. I think one of the things that happens and we're seeing this across all grades from, um, Missy down at Memorial all the way up to us in the high school is that. Because of this. Pandemic and because of the fractured school piece and the fractured ability to have that kind of socialization period, it seems that. We're seeing a great level of developmental kind of emotional immaturity and behavioral immaturity. You know, to the point where our freshmen in high school are. Really like end of the year, seventh graders as far as their behavior, like silly lunch stuff. Matter of fact, this week was like the first week where they actually started to behave. Much more like second term or second semester, eighth grader. So we're hopefully by end of February vacation that it's catching up kind of exponentially. But to the point where the, the, the behaviors and the kind of the emotional response in the middle school, like when we're talking about, you know, talking back and forth about each kid. We're talking about an eighth grader, but we're really treating them almost like they're, they're behaving almost like they're coping skills of a sixth grader. And then that sixth grader is really like a fourth grader. You know what I mean? So. Um, so examples, it's, it's inability to. Tolerate. Any kind of adverse feeling or any kind of, like I said, that kind of emotional affect intolerance. Um. Things don't go good or I don't like the way I feel. Now it's a complete shutdown, but I'm going to throw some cutting on top of it and. And talk about suicidal ideation and then restrict my eating. You know what I mean? It's never, it, it, in the past, it's been. You know, if you were in the middle school, you had middle school level coping strategies and coping skills. And now we're seeing that it's kind of kicked back a little bit, which makes total sense, quite honestly, right? Like. If people didn't have a full year and a half of, of typical. Socialization developmentally, so.
And Dave, I know that, you know, in your job alike with your, your, um, colleagues and, and other school districts, I know in my job alike and Nat has talked about it too, that. You know, across this area, we're seeing behavior at the middle school that we've never seen before. You know, we're just not seeing this type of behavior in kids and, um, it's not just a, you know, localized to, to our district, but it is kind of this whole area. People are dealing with. Behaviors at different levels they've never even seen before.
Absolutely. Yeah. And, and quite, you know, I make it sound so dire and stuff, but we are like light years ahead, quite honestly, of a lot of other districts. Um, so I mean, it's. It's. The, you know, it is something to deal with, but it's not, you know, unique to us. Certainly like Jeff was just saying there. You know, we have in the elementary schools, the, the elementary schools are telling me that kids are coming up like with their trash and they're like. Handing it to the teacher like here, mom, throw away my trash, you know, because they just didn't learn the skills on how to do this. Been, they've been home for a couple of years, you know, and it's been, it's been crazy, but you know, so we're seeing that silly stuff in the high school too. And. So. Yeah, I, without giving specific stuff at the middle school, there's, there's, there's just greater need. There, there's, the kids are being able to tolerate and manage less well. And there's, there's like a spike, a bubble spike here, and we want to figure out. What do we do with that spike? How do we support it? How do we? Plan proactively to manage them when they, when it keeps coming that way? Because this is likely to have in, you know, circum, you know, consequences that last for a couple of years here. You know, and I was, we were at site council discussing this with some parents and students yesterday in high school and, and. The parents and the, um, students were really reporting the same thing, like they've really felt that as well. So. Again, to your point, Tim, like what, what can you guys do for that? It's, I think it's to keep providing the support. And then if, if we come up with things, like I said, we're working on a few things to be able to. Um, bring to you guys as recommendations and then to be able to be open to listening to that, which I know you will be open to listening and. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I got a neighbor in another district and, you know, sometimes it's arms and legs. It's, it's another voice, another body. Yeah. And that's my gut. Like that's what the woman was saying anyway. She's like, you know, sometimes just having a little more one-on-one time. And like it, it's interesting how you describe. The flex period in the high school has allowed that to happen a little more. Which is.
Oh, yeah, it's been huge.
Like, you know, the, the red flag is, yeah, what's going on at Blake and, and how, you know, is there ways to? Provide like. Like source, resources.
Yeah. And I think we're going to get there. And I think we had to kind of wait to see what was going to be some of the, the fallout from all these. Crazy months in a row, you know, and I'm not sure we, we really have understood it fully yet, but, um, even right down to this latest spike in COVID. I mean. You just don't know what's coming next, right? So now that we're starting to be able to identify the need, I think we're going to be able to put some things in place.
Dave, would you? Feel, uh, Leo, do you have anything you particularly want to add? Or if I opened this to, uh? Kind of public.
I, I echo what others have said and I, you know, you answered that. I was going to ask about the middle school, but you answered that question as well. And I. You know, I just echo it's, it's, um, the stories, um, as all of you know, my wife teaches high school and the, some of the stories about what you're reflecting on about that maturity level. Is definitely, it's across the board. It's probably across the country, uh, because of that. So. Thank you for everything you do.
So, uh, if I do open this up to public comment, I, I do want to mention that again, this is not really like a talk back. Kind of thing. If you have things or, uh, in the audience, uh, things that you would like to bring up. Or new concerns or things that you, you have heard that you, um, it's again, a public comment and input, but it is not necessarily a back and forth discussion. Although I'm sure that Dr. Worthy will be happy to talk to you or email you afterward, as would any of us. So. Saying that, if anybody would like to, uh, make any comments about S E L, about, um. Any of the initiatives that Dr. Worthy just spoke of. I'll give a couple of seconds. All right. It's looking as though. We have no comments. So thank you, Dave. I do appreciate it. And, um. I, you know, it's a tough time and it is true. Our kids have not had the same developmental trajectory that a lot of our kids have. A lot of the kids previously, um. But, you know, I think you know, as well as everybody else, that kids can be amazing resilient as can their parents, we hope. And I think that in, in time we'll catch up. It may look different. But it will be better. So thank you.
No question. Yeah. Well, again, thank you guys very much for having me on and, and thanks for all the support of the stuff that we do and, um, and of our kids. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Take care. Thank you.
Appreciate your evening.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. We'll make sure to kind of continue to follow. Where Dave is, as things move along, you know, we had the such a great discussion with our, um. Our student reps last time. About their kind of understanding of how they kind of get in contact with mental health. And it's been, uh, I'm glad the kids are talking about it so much more. Uh, the next thing that we will move on to is, uh, Dr. Morrison, uh, we have the Madeline L. Grant Memorial Scholarship.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So each year, uh, the school committee is asked to vote to approve to release the funds. For the Madeline L. Grant Scholarship for a total of six thousand dollars for, um, M H S graduates, two thousand twenty one, Sydney Lee and Caroline Callahan. Um, each of these students will be awarded three thousand dollars for receiving the scholarship. I ask that you approve that so that the town may release those to those two students.
Right. Um, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, the release of the Madeline L. Grant Memorial Scholarship? Monies as stated to by Dr. Morrison?
Moved.
Glenn, so moved.
Okay. So Leo gets the, Megan, do you want a second?
Sure.
Okay. Megan Glenn's second. Uh, I will do a roll call starting with Megan.
Uh, I.
Megan Glenn, I. I. And then Leo?
Leo Bram, I.
Okay, Tim Knight?
Knight, I.
And Jessica Riley, I. The motion passes unanimously. And, uh, congratulations to both Sydney and Caroline. We're very proud of you.
They both had an awesome, awesome first semester.
You had awesome first semesters. Yeah. Okay, uh, Dr. Morrison, do you have other items since posting on, uh? Uh, January's, um, what day is it now? Thank you. The eleventh. I didn't put my.
Oh, mandatory. I have nothing else.
Okay. Thank you. So then we move on to old business. The first thing being, uh, the tiered focus monitoring that, uh. Mary Brule, the Director of Student Services, came to us with the first reading of its uh changes in two policies. Uh, is Mary or Jeff, uh, Dr. Morrison, do you want to um do you want to?
No, Mary's gonna come over.
Okay, Mary, do you want to come on over? This would be the second reading and potentially a vote to accept these adaptations. Um, if we have no other comments, so. Good evening, Mary Brule. How are you?
Doing well, thank you. It feels so early to be coming over. Thank you.
We decided that we had to cut this one in half, considering the last one went for four hours. So hit it.
Uh, thank you very much. Yes. So we did have tiered focus monitoring. Desi came in um last week, which was um very exciting. I don't know, Jeff, you want me to give a little update on that or hold off um?
No, sure. I I just, I I will say that, you know, Mary did a ton, a ton of work for this. And it was a very successful visit that Desi had. We had our exit meeting on Monday and uh just couldn't be more proud of the work that she did in the district and our staff was awesome. When they came on the visit, they got to see kids um in action. So it was really, really good. I mean, there you think about in the middle of the pandemic and everyone's trying to do the best they can. And then, you know, Desi comes in and does a visit and our our staff and our kids were wonderful. So Mary, if you wanted to just talk a little bit about the the actual monitoring and then the the policy as well.
Sure. Yeah. So as I said before, it changed a little bit in that um we have been having every other week meetings for four months now. Um, so it's been a long process. Um, but we've had a lot of back and forth, um, and we have accomplished a lot. Um, and they came on site. It was supposed to be a shortened visit and they really expanded it the morning of. Um, so I can't give enough shout outs to all of the staff and to the administration that were beyond flexible. Um, as I was literally texting them as I got into the car to say like, I'm coming to your building now. Um, so they were just really wonderful, so accommodating. Um, and as Jeff said, both of the people that came to um see the district from Desi were so grateful and they just kept commenting on the fact that given that everything is going on, staff were so engaged and kids were just happy and polite and kind and um really seemed to be excited about learning. And they their biggest thing was they really wanted to see students, um, you know, experiencing uh Medfield Public Schools. And so they were so excited that they had the opportunity to do so. This was, you know, they haven't been able to have visits all of last year. So this is one of the first cycles of tiered focus monitoring that they were able to do so. So very grateful to everyone in Medfield. Um, and you know, all of the work and the ability to be able to do it. So it was very exciting. And this is one of our final pieces is uh the two policies that we needed to change. So um, as I said, we received a lot of technical assistance that we went back and forth on for months. Um, and this was the final piece, were the updates to these two policies that I um presented last month. No changes have been made to either policy um by Desi or by anyone else at this time. So they are exactly as they were read um at the first reading. Happy to answer any questions about tiered focus monitoring also, but.
So I'm going to just uh briefly let the attendees and anybody who watches this know which policies we are voting on and what they were specifically uh about. Policy J I C F B uh was about or is titled bullying, retaliation and punishment. And uh J K A A was physical restraint of students. And both of them were have been worked on by uh Mary as well as by Desi, as she said, over the last four months. And it's uh they're somewhat prescriptive and highly negotiated. Um, and a lot of them were things that uh that we had been doing already. It's just that we wanted to make sure that there was some writing and as clear as possible. Um, and these policies will also be referred to uh within the handbooks, right, Dr. Morrison? So um we would not have to revoke the handbooks because the the letter names are the same. The policy names are the same. It's simply an adaptation of them. Um, so usually on a second reading, what I would do is open it briefly to public input. Um, so that anybody from the public who had thoughts about it um could uh give their input. And then if members of the committee have additional comments, and then we can put it to a vote if that's what we decide to do. Okay, so uh with that, I will again ask if anybody uh would like to specifically comment on um these two policies. And if not, I'll give you a few seconds. Uh, like I said, you'll have to come over on video. Um all right, it looks like things are going to be pretty quiet. So uh I now open it to the committee as to whether there are any any uh things that they would like to talk about or have clarifying questions. No? Okay, so
I've won, and I think I know the answer, but I
You would never disappoint me, Tim. Great.
Um, and it's more for Jeff, just a soundbite on the J I C F B. Um, the the second one we see, just the the development of bullying prevention intervention plan. I assume we have that, but I just, I don't want to have a policy in place and then all of a sudden realize, hey, we 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 don't have it. I I've worked with you long enough to know that that's not the case, but I want to just maybe speak to it for a minute or two.
Mary, do you want to speak to that? Would that be easier?
Sorry, I was muted. I apologize. Started talking, I was muted. Um, we have uh, we required, every district was required by law. Yeah, before I got here, you know, probably 10, 11 years ago to develop that prevention plan. Um, so the district did that. We've updated it. Uh, and we have that available um on the website. Mary, if you want to.
Yep. So, Tim, actually, the only change to referencing that is that we already had the plan. Um, we already had it in effect. But we are now formalizing it in the policy as well. So that would be the changes that, you know, we, as as Jess had said, everything was already in effect within the district. It's just taking that language and putting it into the policy. So it's a part of the policy as well.
So there's kind of a um a backup, you know, from place to place that people can find it.
So the procedures
Mary, you're very, I I said, it just seemed worth, you know, super sorry.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so if that's the uh the questions that we have at this point, uh can the committee give me a general assessment about whether they feel as though they can take this to a vote? You can give me a thumbs up or yes, okay. So um with that, I will ask for a motion uh to um vote to approve the uh revise the the revision of policies J I C F B, bully bullying retaliation and punishment. And J K A A, physical restraint of students. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Megan Glenn.
So moved by Megan Glenn. Do I hear a second?
Second, Tim Knight.
Second, Tim Knight. Okay, I'll do a roll call vault vote. Megan Glenn?
Megan Glenn, I.
Okay, Leo?
Leo Brem, I.
And Tim Knight?
Tim Knight, I.
All right, Jessica Riley, I. The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. And Mary, go turn on the Netflix, get off the TV, find a book.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Good job.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so the next item on the agenda is the mask policy project. We were going to vote on B B B B A and B D A A revisions. Um, but as I was looking through the minutes, I also realized that we had said that we wanted to do them in chunks of 10 to 15 at a time so that we weren't kind of having um you know, orphan uh policies kind of not uh being voted on all at one time and it'd be easier to track. So would the committee feel okay if we tabled or postponed this until our next meeting when we are able to have um we'll be having a workshop on the 21st where I expect that we will also power through um many other of the policies now that we've kind of worked out our procedure. So we would kind of reevaluate and try to get through almost all of B and then be able to put it forth as a first reading on the 27th, and then we'll continue with our workshop uh first and second reading kind of process. So uh, is everybody okay with me postponing that? Okay, great. Okay, um, then the next thing we will move on to is the uh Desi mask mandate. Dr. Morrison, if you'd like to kind of give us an update and kind of talk about where we're going here?
Sure. So um a- as you know, the original mask mandate that was done uh later in the fall uh was was set to expire on the 15th of January. So Desi came out this week and extended that mask mandate to the 28th of February. So I think they're they're taking a really thoughtful approach on this and looking at you know, where where the virus is, what the numbers are like. Obviously, um, I I don't think it'd be a smart idea to entertain removing masks at this point, uh even though we do have the waiver um with the highest numbers uh the state has ever seen. I don't think that's a great idea. So I uh actually, the most of the districts that were masked have all gone back to, even though they weren't mandated to, they made the individual decision to do that. So I think it's a wait and see for us. Again, take a look at, you know, the trajectory of the virus, see where it's going uh and see what at that point, whether or not uh you folks want to look at your policy around masking and 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 rescind that a little bit, just so that we can we could take the mask off. But I don't see anything in the near future for that. I I would think that it would have to be somewhere in, you know, late February, early March, before you consider that.
I think um, I think that sounds reasonable. I'm also very willing to put a uh kind of a date on the day uh on our next kind of evaluation of that. Um, we have one meeting only in February. I wouldn't recommend doing it in February. And I'm not saying that we would remove masks. I just want to make sure that people know that we're kind of continuing to evaluate this.
Right.
Um, so our next meeting after that February 28th date, I believe, is March. Is anybody looking? I don't have one specifically open.
I think it's the 10th, March 10th.
March 10th. So why don't we make sure that that is uh, I'll make sure that that is on the agenda for that day. I'm sure that it would be anyway, but um let's make sure we'll put that in for now. Okay, does that sound reasonable to everyone? Okay.
And then just, you know, a quick update related to that. Um, the state did provide us with 16,000 KN95 masks that we are even distributing each week to teachers. Um, so we've been doing that. They, you know, a lot of good feedback on those. I know that there was a lot of negative press on those when they first, the first few days they came out, but um, you know, it's the same ones that Michael and I wear every day. They're really comfortable and uh the teachers seem to like them because they provide that protection, but um they're not as restrictive as the N95. We did give the option for teachers that or staff that want N95, we give them those. So we do have some folks that are using them as well. Um, but for the most part, the majority, it's only about 20 to 25 teachers or staff uh that that opted for the N95. So that's all, that's been going really well. Um, I have to say that I know that I've I've talked to you individually about my frustration with um high school students in the masks. And I have to say that um the last week and a half, they've been great. I mean, they have been really, really good. Uh, it's such a change than than what it was prior to vacation. I think, you know, the numbers that um are up there, you know, and I think that they're taking that seriously. So you walk in the halls now and they're wearing their masks correctly. They have them on. Um, mostly all surgical masks. I don't see many N95s, but there are some there. But at least they're they're wearing them properly now, and that's been really positive. So I'm happy that they're doing that. Uh, and then we we did pass out tests prior to uh teachers uh returning on Monday. So we um, we were able to pick up the tests on some Saturday morning, Saturday morning at nine o'clock in Franklin. We were really lucky. It was in Franklin, and that was the the key hub site for all of Eastern Massachusetts. So we were fortunate, it was so close for us. Um, and then we we gave a two-hour slot for teachers on Sunday morning between nine and 11. Uh, Michael and I and many of the administrators um handed them out to to staff. And I know some some uh districts had to break them up and do individual ones. We were able to have enough to give a whole box, which is two tests each staff member. So that was great. Um, so you know, we'll see what's what's going on and what's going forward with with the testing. I know that um I met with the the commissioner last week. He met with about six of us superintendents to kind of float some ideas and and see where you know, some of his thinking is, the staff thinking is, one of the ideas that came out of um one of my colleagues from Needham was, you know, take a look at maybe instead of spending all the money on pool testing, you know, look at a a method where we get uh antigen testings in the district and that we give them to each student on Fridays. And then on Sunday, students will test families and test the student. If they're positive, they don't come to school. If they're negative, they come to school and then do the same thing on Wednesday. So I think, you know, some of the issues around pool testing is it's so sensitive um that it does pick up students who are asymptomatic and don't even have enough viral load to load to spread it. So that's one of the limitations of of pool testing, but um, you know, we've had great success with it. We've whenever those positive pools come in, which are much smaller now, remember, we were doing pools of 10 or 12 kids when this started. We've now brought the pools down to two or three kids so that if a positive pool comes back, it's very limited in terms of the testing. So we're only testing three kids. We're not testing, you know, 12 kids or 10 kids. So uh, that's been working well. Like, for instance, last week at Dale, there were seven, seven positive pools that came out, seven positive kids out of that pool. So um, each pool had one positive child. And we identified those kids and we made those arrangements with the family. So it does work. Um, but I will say that I'm not sure that I I get a sense that contact tracing is going to start to go away from the state level. It's not be required anymore. Um, I think that word's going to come out very soon from them because um it's just unsustainable at this point. And if you look at some of the data that's coming out of the infectious disease folks, they're saying it's it's really not worth it based on the fact that so many people have it. Uh, by the time you do the contact tracing, someone else might have given it to another person because this variant is so contagious. So we're waiting on word with that from the state to see if we can pull back a little bit on the contact tracing um and and see if that's going to, you know, impact. Certainly, our nurses have been incredible. Uh, the amount of hours, the amount of time that they put in in the past few months, especially since school started, it's just been really incredible. So we're so fortunate to have them and so dedicated to making sure our kids are safe. So I really appreciate the work that they do and they communicate with us every single day. So we know exactly what numbers look like and and where the the areas of concern are. So can't say enough about the work that they've done. But we'll wait and see right now, see what the state's going to do around uh contact tracing. Uh, anything with test and stay or anything with pool testing. Well, we should hear from that fairly soon.
Um, anybody have any questions for Dr. Marston about any of that?
And you saw from my last email that I sent to parents, I think it was update 102 uh that we're just going to update the dashboard each week because it's unsustainable to send emails all the time because we're getting so many pauses all the time, you know? And and again, we're not unlike other districts, it's it's everywhere. So um but we've learned a lot. We've learned how to manage it. Our mitigation is great. Our our vaccination rate in this town is unbelievable. Um, you know, we've had the highest rate in Norfolk County for for our younger students. We're going to be doing a booster clinic for for students 12 and over next week. We're going to get the word out on that tomorrow. We're just finalizing some of those plans. So um, again, Kathy Thompson doing an incredible job and the nurses really trying to spearhead that work and and try to make sure that our kids are safe when they're in school.
And you know, even if you don't get into the booster clinic here, if we don't, um I had great luck, uh, literally was in with two or three days for my uh 13-year-old um at the Taunton site. And it's, I mean, it it's a little bit of a drive, but it's quick. My son went to the Brockton site, my other son, and it was, again, short short timeline between the two and um it just was in and out. It was really very efficient went to get there. So sometimes it's worth just a little trip down, a little uh down 495 or 95 to get something done pretty quickly. So.
Um, I may have missed this, but did you say that the state was considering not funding the pool testing anymore? Is that what they're deciding on?
No, that we what we are trying to do is 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 um is try to get them to think of it differently. Um, because there are a lot of districts that aren't doing pool testing at all. So a lot of districts around here that aren't doing it. And you know, what we thought is we tried to push that maybe the antigen test is the way to go. Uh, I'm not sure they were buying that. Um, they they're they're buying the contact tracing, they're buying the test and stay stuff. I think they're fairly committed for the rest of the year with the company C I C to do the pool testing, but we tried to give them another option that and they asked us for things that would help us out. And that, you know, that would help us out by having families, you know, do the test, identify their child at home and then either not, either send them to school or not send them to school. So I think they're fairly committed to pool testing unless something changes, you know, in the next few weeks, but.
Okay, so is the issue that we have to provide the antigen tests and that's unsustainable or what? I guess I'm just the confusion. I'm I'm not sure why we wouldn't want to stay with what's working. Um, especially if the state's paying for it.
Yeah, no, I think it's it's just an option to look at it a different way so that those those kids so that those those kids that are asymptomatic, that don't have a viral load, you know, wouldn't be identified and 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 brought out of school, you know.
They would be tested so frequently.
Right. So they're testing twice. So they're doing two antigens a week versus one PCR. I mean, that's the difference. So kind of figure out how that works. And again, the the PCR through the pool testing is absolutely working. And I I think it was the right thing to do and and make sure to keep kids safe and keep families safe. But we just tried to give them another option and the other option would would, they would have to leave the pool testing, which I'm not sure they can based on their contractual obligations and then be able to purchase antigen tests for every kid in every in the district, of all districts for every week. So I think that's the issue. I know we're getting a huge shipment of antigen tests. I know schools are going to be getting them, but we're not sure it's going to be enough that would allow us to do that.
And if every family is allowed to, you know, with the mandate that Biden just put forth, that insurance has to pay for them and that. And what is it, a family of four, how many tests a week?
12 altogether, I think. Okay.
Yeah, so 12 boxes.
Yeah.
So that ends up kind of putting a lot of you a lot of kids in that kind of informal position too, you know, if we want to try to encourage, depending on how it goes, you know. There's, you know, there's some wiggle room there around being able to have more of a supply of binex and simply having families kind of think about this as like something that you do, like packing the lunch or whatever for a while longer. Just try to keep kids, keep more kids in school and kind of take some of that kind of PCR and the anxiety and just class time off of that.
Minutes versus three or four days now, right? I mean, you know, very quick. Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I know I took one this morning before I went to yoga.
Yeah, this week, this past week, 41,000 pauses for kids.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay. Do I have public input on that at all? If anybody would like to, again, we all know the drill. Come on over, turn on your camera and make your statement three minutes. But if not, not, okay. I see nothing, so I'm going to move on. All right, Dr. Morrison, the fiscal year 23 budget update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, our next meeting is our annual public hearing. That's been posted in the paper. It's it's run, I think, two weeks now. It's also been on the patch as required by law. We also always have a budget book available in central office. If someone wants to take a look at the budget materials and the budget book. We deliver those to your house today, the budget books. Hopefully you got those. And Warren Committee will be getting there is pretty fairly soon as well, the next next week or so, Michael, for Warren Committee. Yep. So I think, you know, we'll be, you know, finalizing and 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 really fine tuning our budget. The numbers haven't changed since the last time we we presented that to you. And and again, it's becomes your budget after the 27th if you vote to approve it. So at that point, we'll start having conversations with town officials and and see where we end up. But we think we came in a really good number and a fair number and a fair increase based on staffing increases and obligations, et cetera.
Does anybody on the committee have a question about that before I open it to public input? No? Okay, it's happy reading. It's a long weekend. I expect you to use all of it to read it. So do I have any public input on this in specific right now? About the budget? Okay. All right, so next donations, Dr. Morrison.
Okay, we have a few.
Just a couple.
Yes. So I asked you.
I will not be reading all of these, by the way. We are just going to vote these through. Big old batch.
It's a long one. Ask you to approve the following donations. First one, $4,000 to the Medfield CPAC gifted by the Lewis and Mary Kay Smith Family Foundation. $200 to Medfield Public Schools gifted by Leaders Environmental. $1,500 to MHS gift account from the Norfolk District Attorney. MHS earned this award for being in the 2021 Team Rival 100 Point Champion. And that's for substance prevention. $2,274.79 to the MHS gift account from Grinnan Barrett Enterprises. $2,500 to the Blake Middle School Theater Department by an anonymous donor. Donation will be used to upgrade microphones and lighting equipment. $2,976.71 to the Blake gift account from Grinnan Barrett Enterprises. And $1,000 gifted by Thornburg Investment Management on behalf of Robert Joseph IV to be used in a kindergarten classroom. I ask you to approve as presented.
Right. Do I hear a motion to approve the donations as read by Dr. Marston as presented?
So moved.
So moved Leo Bram, and do I hear a second?
Second, Megan Glenn.
Megan Glenn, second. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. So Megan.
Megan Glenn, aye.
And Leo.
Leo Bram, aye.
Tim Knight.
Tim Knight, aye.
Jessica Riley, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And thank you to all of these very generous. There are some longtime names there and some first time names there, and it's really quite nice. Thank you so much. It all goes to the kids. So now we are in the wrap up phase of our night. Dr. Morrison, do you have informational items for us? Megan, try not to look so excited.
I I do not, Madam Chair.
All right, does anybody on the committee have any informational items aside from, you know?
Um, I I it's not informational, really. I'm just kind of following up where we left off. At the last meeting, we had discussed kind of next steps in terms of looking at the school project and had, I think, kind of come to informal conclusion that we needed to do some sort of a survey. And I just was wondering if there was an update or any sort of movement anyway.
So this, what we will be doing is that will be on the agenda for next time. The selectmen have approached us about us coming to them with the joint meeting and to also discuss the potential warrant article. So what I'd like to do is have a conversation about the warrant article itself as well as kind of talk to them formally about what our kind of collaboration will be there. And one of the things that we've been talking about with the survey was, if I remember correctly, really gathering information and having whatever kind of interim committee that might be, be the ones who are gathering it as a kind of a from a third party, right, for somebody who is more objective and had more of an ability to kind of collect data in a way that is rapid, you know.
Unbiased?
Well.
So bottom line, is there, is there another?
What I was thinking, but yeah.
Is there a meeting scheduled?
Not yet. I want to, the next time they meet is in early February after we are able to discuss it on the 27th. So I'll try to see what their date is, but I wanted to really kind of also make sure that we had it on the agenda for discussing at the next time. So I just have to circle back with with Christine to figure out what their next date is at the very beginning of February.
Okay, so this, we'll discuss this at the next meeting, the the budget hearing meeting?
Yeah, I mean, the budget hearing takes about 45 minutes, but that's this will be, you know, the other part of the meeting. It's a couple of other agenda items. So, you know, because when we do the budget meeting, we do the budget hearing first. And then, yeah, then we open it to the regular meeting. So but that will be on the agenda. Jeff and I spoke about this morning.
Okay, the other news I shared with you earlier today is that one of the perks of quarantining was that I plowed through most of the policy work, so we're in good, good shape.
Great. No, I really thank you. That is not what I did with my free time. Yeah.
No, but I have I to go. So if any of you guys want to jump in on I, that would be great.
Oh, yeah, no, I'll, I'm I'm happy to help you with that. Okay. Any other informational items, Leo, Tim?
Just Denise Garlick's event on February, but that's not until February.
January, January 20. Next Thursday?
No, I think it's February. I think it is.
You're going to the special event, I guess.
I go to those a lot.
Special one.
Yeah, that's going to be me sitting at the public safety building saying, where is everybody? When? It was actually on Zoom. Okay. So then, anything else in terms of informational items? No, no, I think we've.
I would just, you know, thank you to the Jeff and and Michael. And I know there's been a lot going on operationally managing this the last, especially in the new year. And it's just relieved to have, you know, seasoned veterans helping us with that. And even off off the wall, it's I'm I'm happy to be part of the state. And I think we've also, it's nice to get the leadership we have, even from the governor. When you look at what's going on around the country, it's it's you know, cross our fingers that it can continue. I know it's it's not perfect. But I appreciate the work. I'm guessing Jeff and Michael, it's been a lot of extra hours. I know that goes without saying with the teachers and everyone else you represent. But I would just say thank you for that.
Nicely put, Mr. Mr. Knight. Okay. Future agenda items on January 27th, 2022, school budget hearing and the discussion of potential ATM warrant regarding school building committee membership and a joint meeting with the selectmen to discuss. And then on February 6th, 2022, we'll have a health advisory committee and student advisory update and the superintendent's evaluation. And the next meeting will be the policy workshop on January 21st, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. And Lord Willen and the Creek Don't Rise, that will be in the townhouse on the second floor in the warrant committee room or in the warrant room there. And then our school budget hearing on the 27th at 7:00 p.m. and the regular meeting immediately following. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second. Notting in agreement is not legal. No.
So second, Megan Glenn.
Thank you, Megan. All right, all in favor, Megan Glenn?
Megan Glenn, aye.
And Leo.
Leo Bram, aye.
And Tim?
Tim Knight, aye.
And Jessica Riley, aye. The meeting is adjourned at 8:28 p.m. And we will see you next time around. Thank you so much. And thank you to all of you who stuck around. Thank you. Bye bye. Good night.